On the lower side, they sold it up. Down there, forty, forty-five, down there, on the lower side of eleven cows. Yeah, it's on the left side of the safe road. We got cattle on the city property down there, on the city property, yeah. Sign it a little bit.
Do they sign it for you?
Yeah.
So you just can't move it down?
Yeah, I said, that's right.
How about my unfolded tonight? It's a year of this. And our book was just amazing. The two weeks we were in jail. We will need another book for the team that is here.
Yeah, where's our signing sheet? Yeah, around by the line.
He's doing something.
He looks at it.
He has a headache.
Yes.
Head's like that over.
Do you have an explanation for those?
No.
I have an explanation for them. I don't know if it's a coincidence.
No, we did this with doctors. It's also, it's been a little after this.
Do you have an explanation for those? Those are, those are federal, they came in today. I'm just gonna put them all in one bucket. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Now, you got a signing sheet? Okay. I'll leave for you, son. Sherry Brown? I'm going to start. I'll wait. I'll wait for you. One thing. One thing. One thing.
She's going to get most of them.
Sure, he's got it.
What did she talk to you? There's no one in there, it's dark.
She's talking to Sherry.
I'll answer. Yes, dear. I've been here up here. Say how long, now I'm just kidding, I don't have any up here.
Just let me know.
Yeah.
Little crystals running around everywhere. Did you say you did?
I did.
All right, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. The opening session prayer be given by Wayne Taylor and the pledge of allegiance by Mitch Stumpf.
Let us pray. Our holy and righteous Father, we have ended this with gratefulness in our hearts that we approach your naturally strong mercy and grace at this time and an attitude of prayer and thanksgiving. We're ever thankful for your blessings. We're thankful that we have held sufficient to be here this afternoon. We're thankful for Jesus and the sacrifice that he made for us. We're thankful that he was willing to shed his innocent blood so that through him we can have the forgiveness of our sins and receive the promise of life everlasting. Tonight, we pray for well-being of every student in Overton County schools, for every employer, for, for every parent, for every grandparent, for every citizen. We pray that this board will always make decisions that are pleasing and acceptable to thee. We ask that you will forgive us of our sins and shortcomings, and if we're found faithful in the judgment, we ask for a home in heaven as our prayer, in Christ and in amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, approval of the minutes from the April twenty twenty-three meeting. Motion by Rick Dodson, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Um.
Motion passes. Uh, number five, additions or deletions to the proposed agenda. Uh, so we've got, uh, eight here that just came in today from federal, uh, so we'll go ahead and put those on there. Uh, we'll bucket those all together as out of number eight, uh, under the consent agenda. Uh, it'll say one forty-two revisions, seven amendments. Uh, these are here, uh, for you to look at if you need to. And they're in the pack, oh, Crystal said they're in the packets as well.
These are ones from, uh, Department of Education. Is that, is that the ones?
Yes, the Tennessee.
Yes, gotcha.
Correct. So we'll put those on the number eight. So I'll entertain a motion to add those, uh, to number eight under the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by James Klaus, second by Shirley.
I agree.
Um, any discussion? Any other deletions or, um, additions? All right, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number six, approval of the May sixteenth twenty twenty-three meeting agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Wayne Taylor. Second by Rick Dodson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. I was waiting for the delay there. Um, executive action, we'll go through both, uh, we'll go one by one since this is dollars. Number one, approved low bid of ten thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars from Obmetric Security Systems for visitor management system for seven sites. This is the system that, uh, Ms. Jenny Smith and Brent Thrasher presented to us last meeting. Uh, so I'll entertain, I'll actually take a roll call. Or I'll take, entertain a motion to approve first, sorry. Motion by James Klaus, second by Jarman Hicks, any discussion?
What will these be installed?
Uh, this is the I mentioned.
Yes.
Okay, they had, uh, they said that they would have them installed because we're only ordering seven, and that they should be able to get them to us very soon.
Thank you. Any other questions? Crystal will roll call that if you don't mind.
Uh, William Abston?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
All four zero, pose, motion passes.
Uh, number two, approved only bid for thirty-four thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety cents from Industrial Air Purification Incorporated for five welding booths for Livingston Academy, and this is out of CTE portion of the budget. Entertained a motion to approve. Motion by Shirley Myers, second by William Abston, any discussion? Crystal, you can roll call that as well.
Sure. Uh, Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Eight four zero, pose, motion passes.
And under consent agenda, we'll do all these together. Uh, number one, letter of resignation from the following, Joseph Green and Riley Kaufman as countywide middle school cheer and dance coach. Um, number two, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, ELC revision five. Number three, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, CTE Perkins Basic Revision eight. Number four, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, Title II A, Revision seven. Number five, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-one, General Purpose School, Revision number six. Number six, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-three, Central Cafeteria Fund, Revision four. Number seven, quarterly reports, and number eight, the seven amendments for the one forty-two revisions that we just added, uh, that's in your packet as well. And I think Dr. Holmes got a few notes on those.
Um, to try to do some explaining on each one of these, number two through six, um, as was discussed this afternoon. Um, number, number two, the ELC revision, that ELC stands for Epidemiology Laboratory Capacity, that was a, a grant, some grant money that, that, that every district, uh, received, uh, like a year ago. And, uh, there were some districts that didn't spend all of their money, so districts were, had the option of applying for that money, the leftover money. We did, and we received it, uh, and that's... To add that funding, this is what that is, yes. And we were very happy to get that, very happy to get it. Number three, um, is the CTE Perkins Basic. Um, that one is, uh, where Ms. Riddle just needed to, uh, the Medicare, uh, some money in the Medicare line, just the twenty-three dollars, to make that one come out. Number four, uh, Title II A, um... We moved money from an in, an in-service line over to an equipment line, so we spent all we needed to out of the in-service, we, we wanted to use it, so we moved it over to equipment. And number, uh, five was General Purpose Schools, one forty-one. Okay, that one is where, uh, we are, we have, I say we, but that was actually, um... Kim Dillon has worked a lot, a whole lot, on the summer learning camp, uh, budget, and she's got all that approved, a new plan through the state, and that's what that one is. Uh, and then number six, the Central Cafeteria Fund, um, money was added to the equipment line, um, because they're checking a piece of equipment right now, um, just in, in... I think I'm saying this right, in case we didn't, we don't have enough money, uh, ensure that we have enough money for that piece of equipment, should we need.
And I talked to Dr. Holmes this afternoon, going forward, uh, you know, my recommendation to him was to have supervisors, uh, when they make the amendments, just to put notes at the bottom. That way, when Crystal scans them out, then we can see the notes at the bottom as well. Uh, I think we used to do that in the past as well, too, so.
Well, you go back to number four and say we moved money from what, Dr. Holmes? Number four? We moved money from the, the in-service line? Okay. Over to the equipment line, so they spent all they needed out of in-service and, uh, they wanted to use it, moved it to equipment.
Thank you. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Shirley Myers, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Uh, going to do business, number one, consider approval to grant tenure for the following. Uh, Kelly Montgomery is recommended by Dr. Doc, Dr. Donnie Holman, Director of Schools. Abby Jolly is recommended by Richard Muddin, Principal. Brittany McLaren and Julianne Moffett is recommended by Ryan Ledbetter, Principal. Uh, these will be recognized in the fall meeting, as we have the reception here at the central office, and we'll have all those in attendance as well. I'll entertain a motion by James Klaus, second by Rick Dodson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Congratulations. Uh, number two, consider the second reading of, of approval of the following board policies. Policy six point two oh three, school admissions, and policy six point four oh two, fiscal examinations and immunizations. Entertain a motion to approve.
What? I looked at that, how does that change? Is that, uh, the immunizations, the vaccines, or suffering the vaccinations?
Was that the one that had the red line?
I got you.
Isn't that one, Crystal?
It has green and yellow, I remember. Yeah. And red line.
Okay, um, Ms. Myers, on that one, um, I think what they, what we added on that one was just saying that students wouldn't be permitted to attend unless they have the proper...
Vaccination.
Unless there were, like it says here in the red, unless there were these circumstances that were specifically outlined in the state and federal law, that would prevent them from, prevent, from providing.
Yeah, there are waivers.
Yeah. So, that was what we added on that.
Thank you.
As we were advised.
Any other discussion, questions? I don't think I got a motion. You have a motion to approve. Motion by Shirley Myers, second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number three, uh, consider first reading of approval of policy six point four one one, student wellness. Motion by James Klaus. Second by Jarman Hicks, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number four, consider approval to renew the following bids for school nutrition. Uh, IWC fresh produce for, for fresh produce, Prairie Farms for milk, and Murfreesboro Pure Milk for ice cream. Motion by Wayne Taylor, second by James Klaus, any discussion?
Uh, just real quick, uh, are these going on? Last year's bids, are these ones we taken earlier this year?
We'll refer to Ms. Myers.
The bids are already there, you know, they were approved last year, and all this is, is just continuing it for the next coming school year.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number five, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four, the one forty-one General Purpose Schools original budget. Uh, so this one, real quick, uh, obviously, we've got, you know, some increases in there, we don't know exactly what... You know, we've got a little bit in there until we approve the salary scale, you know, we may have to come back and do amendments on those. Uh, but that'll probably be at the next meeting when we look at salary scales, hopefully. I think Crystal's got a meeting June fifth with the state, talking about the minimum pay scales for the, for the upcoming school year. Uh, there is two buses in there for next year, uh, as we had planned, uh, I know Mitch had asked a couple meetings ago about the maintenance vehicle, so we got money in there for the maintenance vehicle, uh, for this upcoming school year.
Just one.
Um, we got, uh, actually, we got, what's the number, I think? Fifty thousand, so Dr. Holmes had talked to Mr. Mosley, he said instead of getting new ones, he felt like he could get, uh, a couple at, um, surplus. Uh, so we put fifty thousand for him to go and get two from surplus, as he felt that would be a better option, uh, for them to use, so, uh, they, they will have an option to do two, or whatever they need based on the dollar amount, so.
Hey, Mike?
Yes, sir.
We addressed, um, inflationary items like diesel and things, and, and, okay.
Yeah, Crystal said we got that in there, and that's a great point, there's a six percent increase for insurance as well. Uh, that's the placeholder that the state's told us to put in there for now. Uh, obviously, if that changes, you'll have to come back and do an amendment on that, but, uh, yeah, there, there is increases in there for diesel and fuel, uh, as well. Great, great point, Mitch.
What about the buses?
Two.
Two big buses, yeah, I said that.
Any other questions on that? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Rick Dodson, second by William Abston, any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Uh, special recognition, Ms. Aldner's not here tonight, she not be here, uh, so that's everything we have for the meeting. So does everybody have anything? If not, I don't know, oh, sorry. Do you have anything? Yeah, I'll entertain, or, yeah, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Wayne Taylor, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, assuming y'all want to roll into the work session?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's roll.
All right, so work session, everybody good? So out of number one, uh, Special Education APR report. And this is coming off of our, uh, strategic five-year plan meeting we had.
Everyone, if you all would look at the, uh, at this page that you have in your hand, it's in your packet, it's got the brown line across it. I'd sent you all a text message about this for, uh, if you remember, uh, at the last, I think it was at the last meeting, we discussed the, the special ed APR, uh, report, and we were in hopes that, that it would get better, and we would be getting this new report on May first. Well, this is a copy of it, this is a copy of that report. Um, I, I, I wanted to just point out a few little things to you, that in the very upper right-hand corner, it says determination, uh, and it says meets requirements, we're extremely happy about that. This, this is on a, like a four-point scale, and that's, that would be a number four, that would be the highest that you could get, and we're extremely, extremely proud of that. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone involved in that, Dr. Nivens, and all the people in the schools that have worked with her, I really appreciate it. Um, another few little things that I'd like to point out to you, in that brown line across there, if you go over to the right-hand, close to the right-hand side, it says target met. There's a column called target met. If you'll go down through that column, there's, there's a lot of yeses and, um, and two no's. Um, Ms. Nivens had planned to be here, Dr. Nivens had planned to be here tonight, uh, but, uh, something come up, and she wasn't, wasn't able to make it, and I told her I would do my best to go over this for her. Uh, and, and I hope I do it justice, but... Everywhere you see a yes, last year was a no, and then the two places down through there, if you see, if you, if you look at the two no's, uh, that one is, uh, English Assessment Participation Rate and MAP Assessment Participation Rate. Uh, that is two no's, now ironically, like I said, last year, those were yeses. Uh, so, so we did, we did go back on those, we had negative growth there, but, uh, Dr. Nivens assured me that that was something that she was really focusing on, and I said, well, what do we need to do to correct that? Because I feel like they wouldn't want to know. And she said, we need more supports for students in the classroom, in those two particular areas. She's already got in mind what she's doing, implementing, and she's trying to get that done, to get rid of those two no's. And I, and I jokingly said to her, we sure don't want to go backwards on any of our guesses, and she said, absolutely. Um... One other little area, if you'll go down to, you see indicator seven over on your, uh, left-hand side, indicator seven, uh, early childhood outcomes, you'll see there was, we have three yeses in that target met column. Um, like I said, last year, those were no's. Uh, I asked Ms. Nivens, Dr. Nivens, how did we, uh, how did we convert those, you know, what, what was the issue, what was the issue in that area? And she said, last year, uh, we weren't keeping up with the data for students in the, in our IEPs as we should, in, especially in the computer system. And, and the computer system is called easy IEP. So, so now, we've rectified that and, uh, made a ton of difference. We rectified that. Okay, and on the backside, uh... On the backside, number, indicator eleven and twelve, uh, is basically the same as that one on the front that I just mentioned about easy IEP and importing the, inputting the correct data. Okay, and if you'll go down to the, the, the bottom, indicator six, I wanted to mention one thing here, on indicator six, LRE, least restrictive environment. Uh, you know, indicator six, if you go over to the right-hand side under the target met column, it says no. And, uh, I wanted to, uh, I wanted to kind of explain that a little bit. LRE stands for least restrictive environment, and that's what, that is what we are expected and what we want to do, have for our special ed students, who have the, have them placed in a least restrictive environment that they can, that they can do successfully. And last year, our pre-K class, in, of our pre-K classes, we had two that were not inclusion-based. Now, we have them all inclusion-based, so that took care of that, we fixed it by doing that. I'm, I'm very happy with this, with this paper, uh, but I know as, uh, Dr. Nivens said to me this afternoon, the paper looks good, uh, the report looks good, but, uh, she says there's still a lot of, a lot of, uh, hurdles to overcome, and, and she's, she's really got a lot, a lot in mind to do to keep us going in the right direction. And if any of you do have a question for her about any of this, she would be more than happy for you to call her at any time. Does anyone have a question about that? I can, I can try to, if I, if I can get you an answer now, I can get it for you later, if anyone has one.
Uh, then number two, the heat map data per school, uh, that was discussed as well on their five-year strategic plan.
Everyone, what I have for you here with, with the big clip on it, you can go down through, through this, and there is a, uh, there's a, a report for each school. The last time we met, you all had mentioned that you wanted that, uh, so here it is, and I'm just going to talk about the one that's on the top there, just go over it just a little bit with you, so that, uh, maybe it'll help you when you look through all the others as well. This, when we, when we talked, uh, the other night, uh, this is a, a, a zero through four scale, with four being the highest area that you can get. And, and if you remember, I mentioned to you that there was four areas, okay, if you go over here on your left-hand side, uh, it says indicators, there's, and so there's four indicators, achievement, growth, chronic absenteeism, and ELTA. But now, the ELTA is the one that doesn't pertain to us, our system doesn't have to deal with that one, because we don't have enough students in that subgroup. The ELTA stands for English Language Proficient Assessment. So, at this, at this point in time, we don't have to deal with that one, so we just deal with the three, the three areas. Um, and if you go down a little ways, you can see the, uh, the color code there, green being the highest, uh, the, the four, and red being the zero, so we want everything to be as green as we can get it. And on this particular one here that's on the top, I thought I would just kind of go across there, as you, on achievement, as you can see, on achievement, when you go over to all students, you can see what the score was of the two. And then, uh, and then when you go to ED, the economically disf- disadvantaged, you can see what the score is. And then over on the right is a score for that whole indicator. But go up one line, uh, everybody, I, I think I, I jokingly told you all this at the last meeting, that there's been a lot of times I've tried to figure this data for myself, and I was always off and wrong, and I told you that it was weighted, there was a lot of weight, there was some weights in this. Well, all, with, anytime you see the all students column there, that's sixty percent, and then the subgroups are forty percent, so that's how that, those are weighted, sixty percent and forty percent. And then in this particular one, you can see that growth was an area of, 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 of great need at this particular school, uh, and then you can see that the two, coming up there with students with disabilities, uh, was a two. And cr- and then the next, the next indicator is chronic absenteeism, and I, I think I mentioned this to you at the last meeting, but I want to throw this out there one more time, because I think a lot of us, uh, don't, don't realize this. Chronic absenteeism, uh, is any student that misses eighteen or more days. They could all be, have a doctorate dispute, all eighteen days, uh, and, you know, all of them be completely excused, but that child is still chronically absent, because they've missed eighteen or more days, and that's, that's the definition of the state. They could all be, have a doctorate excused, all eighteen days, uh, and, you know, all of them being completely excused, but that child is still chronically absent, because they've missed eighteen or more days, and that's, that's the definition of the state. So it doesn't matter if it's excused or not, if you miss eighteen or more, it's chronically, uh, you're chronically absent. Now, for Overton County, those, those are the three indicators that we look at, or that are, that are looked at, and, and put on that, that zero to four scale to determine, uh, to determine our final score, which is in the very middle of the sheet. The final score there. Uh, and when we talked, when we talked the last time, I kept talking to you about how, when, if a school is doing good in achievement, and growth, and chronic, and, and absentee, and attendance, or their chronic absenteeism, if they're doing good in those three areas, that's an effective school. I mean, there's something going on really good in that school, if they're doing well in those three areas, those are some tough areas, so, uh... And if you remember, uh, at the, the meeting, on this zero to four scale, does anyone remember the number that I kept talking about?
Three point one.
Three, oh, good job, good job, three point one, the school has to have a three point one in order for it to be considered a reward school, so, um... That is, that is why I've talked to the principals about, own and own, and, and they're talking to their schools about, about being a, getting a three point one, so that they'll be a reward school. Every, every school, the district wants to be a reward school, for the benefit of the students, for the benefit of the student. So, I hope, I, I hope that me going over, okay, now let me say one more thing. From that final score on down below, it ch, it kind of changes gears from there down, where it says student group performance, from there down, it's talking a, a little bit different, it's talking about AMO, which are annual measurable objectives, and that's a little, I mean, it goes right along with this, but it's also a little bit different. So, uh, from that final score up is what I generally have focused on. I mean, the rest of it is important, but I've generally focused on the top portion much, much more. I hope that helps you, and I hope that was the information that you requested when we met.
So, so I noticed the Livingston Academy, they got graduation rate, and ready graduates, so does that follow into their overall score as well?
It does, and, and I, I should have mentioned that, but at the high school level, they do have different indicators, they have more indicators than an elementary, that's right. And if, if you'll notice, like, our graduation rate, and a ready graduate, look at our ready graduate was a four, so, uh, those are, I'm glad that those are added in for us, because, uh, that, that's an area that we're, we're excelling in at the Livingston Academy, that's, that's something good for us. Thank you for mentioning that.
When are these released?
These are released much later than, uh, than the, the regular T cap scores, like I mentioned earlier to someone, uh, this may not, may not think we're supposed to get raw scores back, at least for some of the, for, I think, third grade, uh, but this will be much later, probably, uh, maybe even in the fall. I, I was going to say October, but I, I'm not exactly sure if that's right or not, it's in the fall. I hope that helped you a little bit on that.
Any other questions? Uh, item number three, uh, Rick Minogue Elementary School Gym Stairway Structural Support, uh, so, um, that is the steps going outside the back of the gym. Uh, I know when our building program, we walked around and looked at them, and they're actually breaking a leg, uh, from the building, so, uh, Mr. Mosley had got with, um, um, a company, and they originally said it's going to be sixty-five thousand dollars to fix that, uh, but, uh, he went out on his own and got some other information, and, um, basically, the material that they can do is get steel, uh, to reinforce that, it's like sixty-five hundred dollars, that's with our maintenance crew putting it up. Uh, for nine thousand, it'll be, they can get the steel, and that company will come put it in. I mean, my personal opinion is that company come put it in, and that way it doesn't violate any kind of warranty, um, in case something's wrong, so, if there's no objection to that, we can go ahead and have that to next month, and go ahead and get that fixed, uh, since it's nine thousand dollars. I think I'll set all that correct, if you do, so. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
We'll have that to next month's agenda. Then I got a couple, uh, real quick. Number one, uh, Dr. Holman doesn't know, this has been brought up, Crystal and I talked about it today, um, when we talked about the budget and going over the items for next year. In Dr. Holman's contract, uh, it's an extra thousand dollars a year for, uh, CEO trainings that he does every year that's provided through the state, every director across the state gets it. Uh, the state's dropping that next year, so that thousand dollars will go away, uh, for that CEO training that they do, so just something to think about when we talk about the, uh, budget, I mean, the salary scale, next month, hopefully, we'll have those out from the state. You know, do we want to just go ahead and say, yeah, we're going to pay that extra thousand, so we're not taking money away from it, uh, or if you just want to say, hey, you're taking a thousand away, whatever, uh, either way, uh, just, uh, keep that in mind when we talk about it, and we're just about to make sure that we approve that, because our contract says dollar amount plus the thousand, and as a board, we need to make sure that we approve that, so, you know, we're not saying we're giving him an extra thousand, and the board didn't approve that, so, that's just something to think about. Uh, then the last one I got is the building program, so I talked to Bron Templeton today, he's very close to getting the numbers ready, he said he should have them ready by Friday, uh, he's going to set a call up with me at one thirty on Friday, uh, if he gets all the information he needs tomorrow, if I get the link to that, I'll email it out to everybody. Uh, feel free to jump on the call, uh, basically, it's just a rough number of everything that we talked about, uh, those numbers aren't in stone, because obviously, things can change between now and we get ready to do it, but, uh, you know, at that, at that point, uh, hopefully, we'll have a general idea, so I can, you know, start having conversations with Connie on what her, you know, capacity would be, and then at that point, the education committee will start presenting kind of our building program from there, so, uh, hopefully, Friday at one thirty, uh, I'll, I'll send that link to you, and we'll be sending it to you, so, that's all I've got. You may as well have it, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, anybody get a chance, go by the rating, the school, it's the new gym floor, it really looks great in there, and of course, the insurance had to pay for it, that's, that's even better. But it, it does look, it looks nice, and I'd like to congratulate the ones that got the enter.
Absolutely. Anybody else have anything? All right, if not, we'll convene next month, appreciate it.